All right. School Board meeting for School District 499, Tuesday, November 14th, 2023, is in session, six o'clock. Everyone is here with the exception of Amanda, who's not going to be able to be here, and we'll stand with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I see we have one change to the agenda, and that is that we're going to remove 10 BV, the Student Activity Funds. Our business manager was late in getting those, she hasn't received them yet, and so we're going to review them for the next two months at the next meeting. So, any other changes to the agenda? Okay, then I'm looking for a motion for the change in the agenda. So I'll move.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And then, everybody had a chance to look over the agenda itself, and so approval of the agenda, including the change. Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Any public input? Okay. All right, recognition and good things happening. November 11th was Veterans Day, and we like to thank all those who have served and those family members who are a part of the military personnel. The school district understands the sacrifice and is very appreciative. Thank you to Mrs. Nina Goodell and her students for an outstanding performance at the Veterans Day program. Okay, reports? You're up. Student report.
Another quarter was last week.
Okay.
And football and volleyball, banquet, girls' basketball started yesterday, and boys start next weekend.
Okay. And do we have a staff report today?
No.
Okay. So then, we're going to go right to Erin for the principals' report.
Everybody should have a sheet. It's short, but really, this is kind of the meat of what we're doing this year with the staff in our PLCs. Elementary meets once a month as a PLC, and once a month as a meeting as a staff. And high school, middle school does the same. Our four focus areas are diving into data, continue with our curriculum cycle and implementing, updating curriculum, and we're still focusing on language arts and science, our RCD model and training, and then our Marzano instructional model and evaluation. These four things tie in, in my opinion, really well. The Marzano instructional model is about improving our teaching and how we deliver curriculum, and how we deliver curriculum and instruction really should be driven by our data. And then RCD ties in with a lot of the classroom management stuff. So these four pieces all tie in, in my opinion, to more effective teaching and putting our kids in better positions and stuff like that. So I'm pretty excited about that. We had staff development day on these things. We've already had PLC meetings on these, so it's going really well. And I like the Marzano instructional model we're doing. Just for your information, we're on a three-year rotation for observations. However, this year, we changed it to, we're still keeping the three-year rotation. We have our elementary staff, our middle school staff, and high school staff. When one group is on my observation cycle, everybody is still doing goal setting and checkpoints throughout the year. So they don't go forgotten for two years and then they do. So I made that change this year. All the teachers will be doing the same growth model, all of them will do the same checkpoints. They'll be doing peer reviews and working together. So that's a little bit of a change to keep more hands-on for me of all the staff instead of missing some every other year or something like that. So excited to do those things, I'll keep reporting on that. But these are really our main four pieces of focus this year on everything we do. So I will be reporting on those four things as the year goes along. Any questions on those things? Winona State visit, I went last week, I believe, looking to recruit student teachers. There's not a lot out there. I do, I am waiting, there are a few that haven't been placed yet for the spring, and I'm waiting for the names of the supervisor to send me their information so I can reach out and see if I can get some student teachers. I told her what our openings are, and I know they had, there's about seven or eight. I'm not sure what all of their backgrounds were, but that needed to be placed yet. So I'm trying to get that information so I can reach out and see if I can get some student teachers here in the spring. So hopefully fill any openings we'd have going into next year. So continue to work on that, reach out to local universities. But Winona State's really the big one that invites us down, lets us interact with the students and do those type of things. So I'll do that throughout the year. So that's kind of what I've been up to. Any questions or anything of any hopes? Or is that it?
All right. Thanks, Erin. And superintendent's report.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. I have a couple of things for you. Way back on October 26th, this was after our October meeting, we did have vision and hearing screening, that's an annual event that legally a school district has to host, so we did that. We did have Alkney Technologies come in, and they placed some, I'm not going to tell, well, I told you in an email, but I won't publicly say where they are, but we did add two more security cameras to our campus, not only for building security, but also safety of our students and staff, too. So we want to continue to update those and make sure our budget is showing that we're doing that. Speaking of RCD, Larry Thompson, who is our RCD guru who came in here last month, you may have saw our YouTube video. If you did not, there is a YouTube video out there of Larry and all the staff development he did for our staff here that day. Pretty awesome, but Axel did a great job of creating that video, so take a peek at that. I mentioned this last month, I'll mention it again, and hopefully I won't have to anymore, but weather, winter weather is quickly approaching. Please be sure to talk to your constituents about the importance of following us online, getting on our, basically, our weather alert system. Erin and I get up nice and early in the morning and talk to each other, as well as John Stockdale, and determine, you know, if we should have school or not two hours later or whatever. But we communicate in various avenues, whether it's the radio or television, website, you name it, we try to do that. So want to remind everybody of that. My annual little speech about our civil rights data collection is coming up, and so I will be busy getting a lot of data. Erin does a nice job of submitting data for me as well in terms of kind of our student population. I do a lot with our finances, as well as curriculum, instruction, basically our community at large as well, but that is a yearly event. Superintendents have a report that we need to submit, so I'll probably be emailing you more on that, too. If you haven't noticed, we did also, in terms of safety, I'll back up a little bit, we did order a new AED box. It's right next to the microwave in the cafeteria, so our back door of the office there, it's up and it's active, so we'll continue to promote that, too, within our building. Erin and the principals will be meeting here December and January for next year's school district calendar. That's crazy, it's just crazy to talk about that, but they do meet early so that we can bring it in front of you for two months to look at. But if there's anything, like, you know, that just has been really gnawing at you about a school district calendar that you'd like to see, let us know, and we'll bring it forward to our committees here locally, but also consortium-wide, because we do like to partner with those other schools. Friendly reminder, and this is so neat to me, because I feel like I'm still relatively new here, Breakfast with Santa, it's an annual event that's been held here for over 30 years, you guys, for over 30 years. And so this year, it's going to be held on Saturday, December night, so look for tons of marketing on that, but that's coming up, too, so I just can't say enough, that's pretty cool, over 30 years, so I just love that. Couple more things to don't forget, our December school board meeting will host our Truth and Taxation meeting. That's an opportunity for our community, it's kind of two meetings in one, it's our Truth and Taxation, starting at 6:01, we adjourn that meeting, then start right away with our regular board meeting where our audit will be presented. So it's basically our financial meeting of the year, which is really important, but don't forget that, that it starts at 6:01. Finally, speaking of all that, the monies and financials, with our business manager being relatively new, she has not ever built a budget with me, she's only taken what Kristi and I built. We are going to start the budget processing a little bit earlier this year than normal. We're going to start it in December over Christmas break. Her and I can sit down together, no interruptions, it'll just be, you know, starting to tackle, she's in her infancy stages with it now, but now it's time for her and I to start meeting. Normally, I'd probably wait till January, but I'm bumping it up a month just because she's new, and she needs to know even the deeper nuances of our finances and budget. And so you may be hearing early from me, I can't really tell you for sure if you will, but a lot of budget discussions start happening in my emails to you in February, possibly January this year. Otherwise, that's it for me tonight. Oh, one more thing, we did have, I apologize, we did have our MAC OSHA audit, we had our IEA guy come in and walk around the building, thought a couple of things like, you know, two-pronged outlets, or, you know, the heater was left on, or something was hanging from a light in the ceiling, or something like that, very minimal things that we have to take care of. Erin has met with the custodial staff already with these, and then I will follow up later and submit a report that our MAC OSHA is now complete, and we've done everything we can. So if you ever want to see the MAC OSHA, let me know, but again, it's just like a pretend walkthrough of an OSHA. So anyway, but that was finalized here just a couple weeks back, otherwise, we're kind of just moving along. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Any questions?
How often do we actually do a formal OSHA audit?
Hopefully never. Only one time in my whole career as superintendent did OSHA come into the building, and that was at the last school district I served. She was absolutely wonderful, scary, because they look at things that I just couldn't believe she was looking at. We had maybe six or seven things we needed to do better with, and she only basically charged us for one. So every time you get charged from OSHA, there is a fee attached. You know, it could be $250 fee for maybe a dirty I-Wash station, all the way up to a $3,000 fee because asbestos is falling from, I don't know, I'm just saying those things. But only one time in all the years I've served as an administrator, so that's why we contract with IEA, who has these MAC OSHA people who've been trained to come in to just catch those things so we don't get fined. Great question, though.
Do the report, does the MAC OSHA group report to anybody?
They keep everything on file. So if OSHA would ever come here, and for example, I'm not here, Erin knows to call me immediately, I immediately call an IEA to meet me here. And we will walk hand in hand with OSHA and give them whatever they want, whatever they want. So, yeah. Yeah, but great question.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions? All right, let's take a look at the consent agenda. Did anybody get a chance to look over the minutes from last month? I didn't see any errors in that. Treasurer's reports came out late last night. I had a chance to talk to Sharon, things are looking good there. MMV, number four, Student Activity Funds, we know is going to, we've moved that to next month. Okay, we didn't have any fundraisers, donations, or any personnel changes, so we're status quo on those things. All right, so that is our consent agenda. Any discussion? Okay, I'll take a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Take a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
I've got Pat on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. So discussion items, we're going to first look at the policy review, second reading of policies 101, 101.1, 102, 103, and 104. That's our second reading on those. Do we have any comments on any of those? We haven't had any changes to them since we looked at them the first time around, so if there's no discussion, I will look for a motion to accept the policy second readings.
I'll make a motion to accept the policy readings of 101, 101.1, 102, 103, and 104.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. So then, we're going to take a look at the first reading of the policies. We're in the 200 series here, which is all about the school board, it follows directly with what MSBA and the statutes. There isn't anything that doesn't follow the statutes. So we didn't see any changes in that, and then Jen is going to speak to us very briefly on 621, which is something new coming in. Should I jump ahead?
Nope, I got it right here.
Okay.
I thought I did.
Here, I've got it.
So 621 is actually the Minnesota, it's called our READ Act, so it's the Minnesota Reading to Ensure Academic Development Act. So what we're noticing in a lot of this, if you dig deep into it, a lot of it is reflective of us still, our children still coming out of the pandemic, that loss of learning. And so Minnesota has taken strides in terms of policy to see how we can recover from that. And so in this policy, and I've asked our policy committee for, because we will not have policy in December, it's just too busy for our folks, so last three years, we just don't do it. But it gives them time until our January policy meeting to really review this policy and talk about what are the needs of our district locally? Do we need to really encompass this whole policy or not? For example, there's one portion in there that it's suggesting, in this policy, again, we're only at first reading, but suggesting we have a literacy coach. Now, are we in that dire need to have one? Another one is MDE has certain vendors they like and can afford to purchase in terms of assessing our kids that match our MCA data. For example, years ago, we had Fastbridge, both Erin and I have done our research on that. He didn't like it when it was here, I've never liked it, so it actually worked out good that we said, we're done with it, and we're going to IXL, which we've talked to you at length about, and it's actually working. MDE does not embrace IXL. So this young man over here, my principal, has decided to email MDE and kind of start some arguing, like, wait a minute, no, locally for us, it does work. Our teachers have embraced it and enjoy it and work with it. I have one sitting, well, two sitting here, but one sitting here who uses it regularly, from what I'm hearing, and she's very good at it, from what we're told from a mentor teacher. And so this whole policy is going to kind of throw us in a little loop, hence why we're kind of taking our time. As I said, once we kind of get to the point where we implement this policy, I will be sharing a PowerPoint with you, because I think it's really important. I mean, this is why we're here, is to teach our kids. But how we teach our kids is what we need to really embrace, not what MDE is telling us, we're local control, we have that, and we're going to do it our way. So a lot of feedback is going to be necessary. I have it ready to give you, but not tonight, not tonight, I don't think we're ready for that, because I want feedback from our committee. But we want our kids to read at grade level or above, that's really the basis of this policy. So you'll be hearing from Erin and I a lot on this, and like, he kind of prepped you a little bit tonight, what he's doing with evaluations. And all this literacy stuff, all the math stuff, it all stems from the classroom, and the importance of developing our teachers, making sure they are instructing at the most quality level, so their pedagogy is there, we want that. We want to make sure Erin is developed in all of this, so that he is our instructional leader in all this. So there's a lot to not only this policy, but everything we're doing. We're trying to, instead of having a patchwork quilt of curriculum, instruction, data reading, assessments, it's actually just a nice bed sheet of information, it all looks good together. So be prepared for that. Probably in January will be my PowerPoint right after policy, but I'd love to have your feedback. If I could also give you guys homework tonight, too, in terms of this policy, that would be great. Take a peek at it, ask me questions, ask Erin questions, or just say, hey, I'm hearing about this, or maybe MSBA is talking about it, too. But it's one of the bigger ones we've had in a long time from the state capital. So I know I said a lot there, I'll kind of shrink it down in January when I present.
Yeah, Jen sent us all a copy of this in our board packet, and so since it's new, like she said, we're going to take a little extra time looking at it, but hopefully all you will have a chance to read it as well. And then, like Jen said, we won't be having policy meeting in December, so this whole thing will come up in January, which will be good, because at our December meeting is all the financial stuff, and so then we won't be looking at policies until January, okay? But we do need to have, any questions?
Is this just for information tonight, or are you still asking for?
I just want to first read approval, that's it. So then we can really start digging down, and we're in a sense dismantling it if we have to. So.
So we do want to include it in the first?
In just the first reading.
So we're looking for a motion of the first reading of the 200 series policy and the 621. So a motion for that?
I move to approve the first reading of policy 201, 202, 203, 203.1, 203.2, 203.5, 203.6, and 621.
Thank you, and a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. B is discussion and approval of the change in the Elementary School Handbook regarding the Cardinal Kids Snow Home. So Jen, I'm tossing this back to you again.
You got it. No problem. So in your elementary handbook, remember the handbooks we did all summer, right before school starts, we have a first and second reading? Well, our Community Education Director, as well as our Cardinal Kids Cardinal Care Director, came forward to Erin and I to discuss kind of some liability stuff and other things related to this particular language and narrative in our handbook. So we, of course, made some phone calls, did our thing that we had to do, and we want to come forward to all of you and say, wait a second here, we'd like to pull this from the handbook. We don't believe that we should be a 24-hour service to parents when there is a snow emergency. We're a little concerned with kind of the spend the night thing, unless it's, of course, a board-approved field trip or something like that. This is kind of a no-go for us, we're just not comfortable enough to go forward with it, so we wanted to catch it early, before that winter weather hits. And so we're not suggesting at all, we're not here to help families or serve families, that is truly not it at all, but we aren't the parent of a kid at midnight. We just, we can't, we can't take on those roles and responsibilities unless we absolutely have to. If there was a, you know, a fertilizer leak or something, yes, we'd open our building.
Catastrophic, something catastrophic.
Something catastrophic, yes, we will open our building to whoever, but we want to be proactive with this and kind of stop it for now.
I'm not sure that it's ever been used, has it?
I don't think it's ever been used, so it probably is good to take it right out
of there. So what it says here is that we will, in the Elementary School Handbook, we will, out of the Cardinal Kids, we'll take the language removal that the Cardinal Kids would be considered a snow home for kids to stay overnight. We're going to take that language just right out of the handbook.
Do they still, do you still have, I don't recall, snow homes, though, in town?
Yeah, they'll still fill out that and say, you know.
Like those emergencies.
Where they could go, yeah. But that the daycare is not one of them.
Right.
All right. So I'm looking for a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to remove the snow home language in the handbook.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Thank you, and all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? All right. Did anybody get a chance to look through, we were reviewing the pool handbook, we had done a first reading on it, and we were just looking at a few things for the second reading on that. And so getting ready to discuss if there's anything that anybody?
And Lindsay's here, if you have any questions.
Okay.
She's kind of our guru of this.
If anybody has any questions regarding some of the things in the pool handbook, or if we are ready to go ahead and do our final approval of that?
I have motion to approve the pool handbook.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now we are to the resolution for the canvassing of their votes. I'm going to read this as written. We are, the resolution for canvassing returns of the votes of ISD 499, Leroy Ostrander School District, special election for school board member to fill the vacancy interim expiring January 6th, 2025, is for Amanda Obern. So we're canvassing, your vote is to accept Amanda Obern to fill the vacancy, well, it's not really a vac, yes, for Amanda Obern. It's a roll call vote. So Pat Arndorfer?
Yes.
Dave Farlinger?
Yes.
Dave Lunning?
Yes.
Amanda will be abstained. Angie Olson?
Yes.
Deb Rayburn?
Yes.
Kyle Stern?
Yes.
Okay, so that passed. All right, and then, resolution canvassing returns of votes of ISD 499, Leroy Ostrander School District, special election for school board member to fill vacancy interim expiring January 4th, 2027, Angie Olson. Roll call vote. Pat Arndorfer?
Yes.
Dave Farlinger?
Yes.
Dave Lunning?
Yes.
Amanda, absent. Angie?
Abstained.
Abstained. Deb Rayburn, yes. Kyle Stern?
Yes.
All right, so that also passed. All right, due diligence done. Paper is signed?
Yep. All right.
All right. Very good. School Board Committee reports. So the Community Education Committee met last Wednesday, and I was unable to attend, but in talking with Kate Rohr, who's the chairperson there, things are going really well, classes are being held, things are going really well. Meeting confer, we are meeting in December, we have a date set to meet in December. MSBA, Dave?
There's one webinar on Thursday, it's kind of a coincidence, there's navigating negotiations from one to two, I'm planning on getting and listening into that one.
Timely?
Yes.
Okay, so that's this Thursday. Okay?
And that's all that I saw there.
Yep. And then Dave and I were talking earlier, got tag teaming with him on this. The, I received this in the mail, I don't know if you all got these, but I know that Jen sent you.
You did.
Yeah, okay. And so I think that Dave and Kyle can really say, last year, we attended, and it was very, very good.
Yeah.
Excellent speakers. Did you feel like it was worthwhile?
Yeah.
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 I felt like it was, it was really, really excellent speakers. The roundtables were all subjects and things that we just really need to know.
Nice networking with other board members.
I think that's the best part of it.
Yeah, that's good. And then one year, I even attended one that was just board
And then one year, I even attended one that was just board members from small school districts. And so, because you have your own set of concerns, you know, and issues. So I just wanted to tell everybody to, that if you're interested, that it's really an awesome experience, and we are to let Sharon know, and she will get us registered and then also get a hotel for what our needs would be, so. All right. Anything from the State High School League?
No.
Okay. Scholarship, anything new happening there yet?
Nope.
Okay. Certified negotiations?
Yeah, we can give you a tiny little report. We met, I guess it's Pat, Dave and I, Jen and Sharon, we met all day long in mediation yesterday. Did not come up with a tentative agreement yet, however, the, we've been told the entire staff is going to take a look at our, our proposal, so we'll see how that goes. But really, other than that, we can't give you any details.
Okay. You don't have another date set or anything?
No.
Nope, okay. All right, thank you. Non-certified, we're not working on anything right now. SMEC Board?
We meet later this month.
Okay. Policy review, we've talked about World's Best Workforce is coming up.
Met tonight?
Huh?
Met tonight?
Met tonight, okay.
Yep. Dylan did say.
Do you want to say anything about that?
I was unable to.
He couldn't.
Get there, okay.
But I can speak out it really quick.
Okay.
So not a lot of changes, except for that reading piece, that they're looking at implementing that into the World's Best Workforce. So Erin and I will be working on our submission to the, for that, that big report that we always submit, you guys will get a copy. It'll have active links in it, so you can click on our literacy plan, our strategic plan, you name it, there's going to be active links in there, you can do that, it'll also be on our website. So that'll be submitted sometime in December.
Okay, that was my question.
It'll be for January 1.
Okay.
So we'll get that to you guys, but otherwise, no, it's, it's basically the same as last year, we just inputted the new data from the MCA scores, our assessments there, any new policies that we're implementing are in there. That's about, yeah, I think, oh, IXL information is in there now, because we took out the other stuff, so, so it's, there's some new stuff, don't get me wrong, but it's everything we're doing, so, but you'll be able to see that with active links.
As staffing changes, do other, do new staff have opportunities to participate in that?
If they want to jump on, they are welcome to. They are always welcome, absolutely, yep.
All right, and that, and you're, and you'll be submitting that in December, before, before January?
Kind of like the last minute we like to submit, just to, you know, make MD nervous.
All right, Buildings and Grounds?
We don't meet till next week.
Okay, oh, next week, oh, sure, of course, yeah. And then the Collaborative, we're meeting in December, so. All right. Calendar updates, again, Buildings and Grounds will be next week, Thanksgiving break, our next school board meeting is December 19th, at 6:01. December 21st is early release for Christmas vacation. Or I mean winter break, excuse me, winter break. And, and then our school board meeting in January will be January 8th, because that is the first Monday after New Year's, and we have to do a reorganizational meeting then, and we'll just do our full meeting then. I think that's everything. Okay. Agenda, adjournment, motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
There we go.
Second.
There we go. Okay, and it is?
6:34.
All right, thanks, everybody.